Good evening, or I should say good afternoon if I wrote I'm doing that. Well, let's try it again. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. And thank you for joining us at the -- well, actually, it gives me great pleasure to be able to say this. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 16th, 2008 Joint Meeting, the Glendale City Council and the Glendale School Board. And at this point, let me ask the city clerk to call the roll for the city council.
Thank you. Council members in motion?
Here.
Quintero?
Weaver?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Mayor Drayman?
Here.
Mrs. Bogart?
Present.
Mr. Kikorian?
Here.
Ms. Nahabedian?
Here.
Mr. Sambar?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner?
Here.
Very good. I was notified that Mr. Quintero is on his way. Let me at this point ask the president of the school board to lead us in the flag salute.
We stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Records show that Mr. Quintero has arrived and is joining us on the dais. Well, I'd like to make a couple of opening comments, and those are these. It gives me great pleasure to welcome my colleagues from these two fine organizations as we once again sit down together, but in particular to Board President Wagner and to Board Members Bogart, Sambar, Kikorian, Nahabedian, thank you for joining us today, this year, in council chambers. Welcome. I would also like to take the opportunity to recognize and share my appreciation with our city of Glendale unified staff and especially to City Manager Starbird and Superintendent Escalante. So, thank you all. This has been a productive and a challenging year for both organizations. I think that's fair to say, and it is with this in mind that I am honored to express great admiration for the meaningful and dynamic joint work in which our two organizations have and continue to be engaged. So again, I thank you. We will hear about some of those by means of today's agenda, but let me state at this time with regard to the tragic loss of life near Keppel Elementary, just how proud I am of the good work, the thoughtful outreach and the meaningful results which have occurred via the joint work on the part of the schools, the city, and especially with the community. It's a very sad occasion that has brought us to this purpose, but I am extremely proud of the organizations for rising to the occasion. We'll hear more about that later. The most lasting and meaningful resolution to this last issue, in my view, and in fact all joint issues of our organizations, remains the earnestness with which we as elected officials represent our joint constituencies, for they deserve nothing less than our diligence, determination, and conscientiousness in the pursuit of excellence on their behalf. With that, let me turn the meeting to my esteemed colleague, Board President Jolene Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor Drayman. On behalf of my colleagues on the Board of Education, I want to thank the city, and I -- my comments will be very much like yours, Mr. Drayman, but I want to thank the city of Glendale, particularly City Manager Jim Starbird and Mayor Drayman. And as we get into the first item on the agenda, Mr. Bagdarian and all of that team for their invaluable, inestimable, estimable support and the quality and scope of their assistance in addressing traffic needs in the wake of the death of Mary Nahabedian. The working relationship between the city and our schools is put to the test and is in the limelight in situations like this, but the results that you're going to be -- that we're going to be sharing today are really a reflection of the long relation, the ongoing efforts and relationship between our two entities. Having thanked many of the visible city folk who I know have been at work on this, I also want to acknowledge the work of Dr. Michael Escalante. I'm not used to -- oh, there he is. I'm used to looking through him on my left, and his staff for their continuing efforts in support of student welfare and in particular support of our city district partnership. Today's report and the recommendations you're going to hear on traffic are the latest update of work and conversations that have been going on for years. I remember the discussions and the planning regarding the same streets around Hoover Toll and Keppel following the death of Raul Ahiri. But before that, at John Muir Elementary, our PTA learned that Mr. Hank Paz, who's adding in the audience, was our man at the district who was working with the city on traffic safety issues when our children were in elementary school. And he's still working with the city, still working with our police officers who we know are already stretched so thin and who would so love to protect every single person in this city, but they can't do it all, and that brings us together here. While our core mission as a district is with the education of our students and the safety is really at the core of the city's mission, we've long known that we share those missions. And so, thank you for having us here today. I look forward to this meeting and to our continuing work together.
Thank you very much. Well, before we go to the city clerk for his report, let me just mention that the city manager and the superintendent have these shoehorns if anybody needs to make an adjustment up here. All right. Mr. Kasaki, in your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam President. And just a small matter of housekeeping before we move on to the need of this joint special meeting. The agenda for the December 16th, 2008 Joint Meeting was posted on Thursday, December 11th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside of City Hall and was also posted outside of the school board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kasaki. With that, let's go to the next item on the agenda.
Item four is Director of Public Works regarding proposed short-range traffic safety enhancements in the vicinity of the Hoover, Keppel, Toll schools. Item four is a motion directing staff to implement necessary environmental reviews on short-range traffic safety enhancements in the vicinity of Hoover, Keppel, Toll schools.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kasaki. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor Drayman, President Wagner, members of the city council and school board, some very brief preparatory comments that I'm going to let John O'Bagdanian present the review of the Hoover, Keppel, Toll situation and the recommendations arising from what has been a rather exhaustive and yet, I think, very positive time spent among school staff, city staff, and a good number of community members and leadership within the assorted PTAs to make sure that we've left no stone unturned as we've looked to review the safety condition at Hoover, Keppel, Toll. I would like to say and express my thanks to Superintendent Escalante for, within hours of this incident, he and I were communicating together, talking about how we would bring the community and our two respective organizations through this terrible tragedy and make sure that as we emerged from it, we would put in place positive changes that would give us the best opportunity to ensure to the extent that we can that an event like this won't happen again. Again, you can never be 100% sure, but as I noted to many community members, our obligation is to take a look a second time, even though we've spent a lot of time and energy at the Hoover, Keppel, Toll facilities back in 2001, or 2000, I always forget whether it was seven or eight years ago, following the last major incident there. We had a responsibility to redouble our efforts and make sure that we were doing what we could reasonably to prevent an incident of this type from occurring again. With that, we had a number of meetings. Dr. Escalante invited staff and me to come to a breakfast, one of the few breakfasts that Dr. Escalante has hosted. And actually, start the process by engaging in a discussion with the school administrators, especially the site administrators, and the engineering staff about the situation. And from there grew a plan for engaging the community, parents, teachers, PTA leadership in an effort to look at the situation around Hoover, Keppel, Toll, and most importantly, make sure that everybody understood the school board and city council's sincere desire to make sure we were doing everything we could to prevent an incident like this from occurring again. From there came a number of meetings. I think there were at least two or three meetings with administrators and staff and two community meetings, the second of which, I think, every board member, or at least four board members, as I recall, attended the larger meeting at the Hoover Auditorium. And I think from there established a tremendous level of credibility in the districts and cities' efforts with the PTA and the parents to achieve the goal that I've related to you several times now. And as a result, I think the process, as Mayor Drayman said, has been a very positive one, although rising out of a tremendous tragedy that we never want to repeat, I think it has taken that negative event and, as best one can, tried to turn to something positive so there can be lasting results. With that, I'll ask John O'Bagdanian, who's our city traffic engineer, to do what he has done at least three or four times before now, and frankly, which he and his staff do so well, which is to really evaluate situations like this and try to ascertain how best we can to prevent accidents from occurring. John?
Thank you. Mr. Bagdanian.
Mayor, gentlemen, members of the city council, President Wagner, members of the school board, I'd like to just walk you through the number of the improvements or safety enhancement that we have come up with based on the input that we have received through the public meetings, as well as public works and traffic engineering staff. We looked at what we've done in the years before, in the year 2000, and we have enhanced them, and we've done a lot of field observations since the accident occurred to see if there's any additional safety enhancement can be made. Essentially, this is the area -- thank you. This is the area of the school Hoover Toll and Keppel. Some of these streets I'm going to mention a number of times, Virginia Street on the west side, Glenwood, which is shared by all three schools, and Concord, South Street, and Olmsted. These are the main streets that majority of the traffic going to and from the school is circulating around the school during the AM and the PM afternoon peak hours. In 2000, we did a number of changes in this area, namely, in order to improve the circulation around the school, we converted Virginia and Concord to a one-way street couplet. We also converted School Street to a southbound direction, one-way direction. We looked at all the on-street restrictions. We made changes, working with the school district in terms of whether it was a bus-stop area, or it was a drop-off area, or it was restrictions, or one-hour parking. We implemented all those in this area in particular. We also, working with the school district, improved all the sidewalks. The sidewalks were narrow on Virginia and Concord. It was just too narrow for the volume of pedestrians that was handling. Some right-of-way was given by the school district. The city made the improvements. There were old trees that were removed, so we enhanced the pedestrian walkability of this area for -- in that period of time. Substing to that, in the year 2003, what we did is we also enhanced this mid-block crosswalk that was constructed first. We put in pedestrian warning lights, or press the button, the flashing warning lights that are in the pavement flashes, and it helps alert drivers to the pedestrian activity in the mid-block crosswalk. In addition, we added nine crossing guards to this all around the schools at intersections of Virginia and Glenwood. We had it at intersection of Concord and Glenwood, and also Kennewort, Stalker, and Concord area. Later on, we added two stop signs, two speed humps in 2005 based on speeding that we observed on -- was occurring on South Street. At the request of the residents and our observation, we added two stop signs in 2005. In 2008, we added five speed humps on Olmsted and two on South Street. Right now, we're also looking into, at the request of the residents and our field observation, to add three speed humps on Virginia as well. Again, during the school pickup, drop-off areas, the speed of traffic is very low. However, after that, when the traffic clears, because it's a one-way street, there is speeding and the average of about 32 miles an hour in that period of time. So, we're recommending that we install speed humps on Virginia at this location. What we also did is after doing a -- conducting a field review of all the crossing guards that are in that -- around the schools, we have one additional crossing guard, because right now it's operating at the mid-block crosswalks. We've done additional surveys at the intersection of South Street and Concord and Virginia and South Street. This came out of the meetings that we had with the public. We also did our own surveys. There are certain criteria for adding crossing guards at the intersection. So, what we're recommending to add, two more crossing guards at South and Concord and two crossing guards at Virginia and South Street, again, to enhance safety during the morning and the afternoon hours. What we also did, we converted that mid-block crosswalk to an all-way stop. We had the flashers where pedestrians were pressing, the warning lights will come on. Now, we have already converted that. That was completed last week. We have a full-way stop, so if you're going in both directions approaching the mid-block crosswalk, you have to stop completely. And we've also put in red flashers that enhances the identification of those stop signs at the mid-block location. As we are -- I will show you in another slide, we're also proposing a raised median along Glenwood, but once we build the median, we will also add another stop sign in the median location. So, we have removed those flashing warning lights, converted that to an always stop with the stop signs. An additional improvement that we're recommending is one of the problems we have observed and we have also received input from the school district and the residents in the area, or even the parents, is that people who are driving on Glenwood, once they drop off their kid, they do U-turns on the middle of Glenwood, or there is a lot of jaywalking is occurring from both sides of the street, from the north to the south or south to the north. One of the ideas, we felt that we can convert Glenwood as you approach from the east or from the west, essentially make Glenwood like a campus street. So, it narrowed it down further by installation of a four-foot median. That would be from essentially Concord Street all the way to Virginia. We will have to leave an opening for the driveway to the Hoover High School for -- next to the auditorium. That would occur there. And then, we're also adding a bumpout on the north side. Again, this is the area where all the school kids from Hoover are coming out. The sidewalk is somewhat narrow. In addition of that bumpout, we'll make it a little wider area for pedestrians to stand. In addition, it reduces the walking distance from north side to the south side. It's a shorter distance for the pedestrians to walk. At any time, you may have 40, 50, 60 kids either crossing this intersection in the morning or in the afternoon, with the crossing guards, of course, that are there. So, this median, in addition to construction of a median, this is a six-inch-high median, we're recommending that we put in a 36-inch-high railing on top of it. It would be more of a decorating railing, not like a fence, that would -- to prevent, again, the jaywalkers to cross, walk onto the median or stop and then cross. Again, we're trying to force everybody to go to the crosswalks that are with at the intersections that also have a crossing guard located at that, operating the crosswalk. In addition to that, we've worked with the school district, with each one of the principals and their staff. We looked at all the existing on-street restrictions in terms of drop-off areas or pickup areas, and we have made modifications on Glenwood, on Virginia, and Concord. One of the additions that, once we also notified the residents, is to put in a white center line on -- thank you. A white center line on Virginia, because right now, what happens is, because it's a one-way street, all of a sudden, you may get three lanes of traffic going northbound on Virginia. One lane on the right-hand side is for drop-off. We think we can reduce that by just creating two lanes, one lane that is going northbound for the drop-off area, the other lane will go through northbound, and they can make a left turn at Glenwood, essentially to try to guide the parents that are doing the drop-off or pickup activity a little bit more than end on trying to weave in and out of traffic in two or three lanes. So, those will be done. And then, we have a number of one-hour parking zones, approximately 15 spaces that are on Glenwood. These spaces, on a regular basis, are being used by visitors to the school district. However, they get violated all the time, so somebody can park there for an hour. It could be even a student parking there. So, working with the school district, we're recommending to install 15 parking meters. These are one-hour parking meters throughout the day. They'll be in operation from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and it will essentially turn over those spaces. We cannot be there all the time to enforce the one-hour parking requirement. And also, during the pickup and drop-off hours, we're trying to turn over those spaces, because especially in the afternoon, parents come in and park there, waiting and waiting and waiting, and they take away that parking space that could be used for a quick pickup or drop-off. So, we think that would also enhance the availability of parking on street. So, in total, right now, we have 10 crossing guards around the school. We will be adding four more, so there will be a total of 14 crossing guards. That would be around these schools. In addition, the police department has enhanced their monitoring enforcement in this area. They're present here if there are any questions. And in order to basically issue citations to people who are violating, whether they're pulling in red curbs, areas that are no-stopping areas, or they're pulling into drop-off areas and waiting there that -- where they should be moving after the pickup or drop-off activity. In addition to all these improvements we also received, these are all the short-term improvements. We're hoping to get all of these done by the end of this year, not by the end of this year, in the next three months, because the construction of the median is going to require some design work to be done. We have to issue some change orders to current contracts that we have so that we can do the construction as soon as possible, as soon as the school year is over. Early January, we hope to begin doing that work. Most of the signage and striping changes can be done also within the next 45 days. Those can be done with our crew. We're working to issuing another change order for the construction of the speed humps on Virginia. So, most of the things that I've discussed, with the exception of the median, can be completed very soon. In addition to these short-term, quick enhancements that we have, we received a number of comments or suggestions in terms of looking at essentially reducing congestion around the school. Some of those included staggering the hours of the opening, beginning, or ending of the schools, that the school district will be looking at that. That's something the city has no control over. It's obvious the school district will have to look at that. There were some suggestions as to, you know, potentially restrict left turns or right turns during the peak hours at these intersections. We'll be looking at those. The drop-off, pickup areas, in order to improve that, the Keppel School already has a person that is helping with the pickup and drop-off activity. Potentially, as we're going to encourage more and more parents to drop off, students for the Toll Middle School, instead of coming through this traffic, actually do the drop-off here. There are additional gates that could be opened, or the school will, as they see fit, can enhance that. There's flyers that we will be generating as to the entire circulation for drop-off, pickup times, what are the do's and the don'ts. Those will be provided to the school district to be circulated to the parents. And education outreach improvements will be done. We're working with our public information officer in the city to provide additional videos, educational videos, and special legislation concerning traffic laws, regulations, and enforcement, such as lowering the speed limit in the school areas, as well as using cameras for enforcement. Those are some of the things that our police department will be working in order to, again, enhance the safety around the school. Mr. Mayor, that completes my presentation for the short term and the long term, and we will be coming back to this board hopefully by June to give you an update on more of the long-range improvements or some of the improvements we've already made, to give you an update with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bagdanian. To my colleagues on the dais, my habit is to see if you have any comments or questions with the understanding that we will go to the public. We do have a speaker card on this item, and then we'll come back for further questions or comments. So, if there's anything that you have immediately, otherwise, we'll go to the public. Mr. Weaver?
John?
Mr. Bagdanian?
John, I have a question. Just on the surface, not knowing the traffic patterns, and knowing that a lot of the driving public make all kinds of dumb turns, et cetera, on the streets, you say that putting the median in, but leaving a break will eliminate U-turns. To me, they're going to use that brake in the median to make U-turns. Now, if there's such a large traffic flow coming from the west, that you have to have that left turn into the Hoover parking lot, that's one thing, but if you don't have the brake, that means a certain amount of traffic flow is going to have to go to the east and circle, come west on Glenwood and make a right turn in. Are you saying that the benefits of having the left-turn lane and gambling people won't make U-turns outweigh making people go to the east and come to the west?
Counsel, you're talking about this brake?
Yes. And look at the width that you show there.
What we plan to do, obviously, we want to put signs at both ends of these that would say, "No U-turns."
Oh, and then put a police officer to make sure they don't do it. Okay.
That would be our -- but this is, again, one of the things, we haven't engineered this completely. We will work with the school district. They have some truck deliveries that would have to come into here from this direction, or they can turn from here. Obviously, possibly, you can close this. The reason we have left it open, we wanted to also discuss this with the fire department, because fire department has to access it. This is a school area, so for safety reasons, we felt that keeping that median brake is important for fire emergency access versus necessarily for the loading and drop-off.
That's the first thing. If that of fires, one thing, but if it's the convenience of residents that are driving their kids to school, then close it down.
I agree.
You're going to be studying it.
Okay. All right. Are there any other comments before we go to the public?
Thank you.
No? Okay. All right. We have two speakers on item four. The first is Bruce Philpott, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good afternoon, Mayor Drayman and members of the council, and President Wagner and members of the school board, and city staff, school staff, and the public. My name is Bruce Philpott. I'd like to commend the staff for its suggestions to reduce the potential of a future tragedy, one that we experienced through this year. And I would, with all these suggestions, like to turn really to the budgets of both the school district and the city, because each one of these suggestions do create a cost, and the city, as we know right now, is struggling to find just a couple million dollars now to build out its first public swimming pool in a number of years. I'd like to first comment that reading in the newspaper, the teachers' union, although it raises for the next three years, according to the newspaper article, Mr. Alan Drayman, who's the president of that organization, made that clear statement, and I believe that that message states something very clear from the schoolteachers in this city, that children are first. Both budgets, as we know, have been compromised. The school board is looking at maybe an $8 million shortfall this year. The city council, the city budget started off with a deficit of $10 million. It's now grown to about $18 million, although it did cut that first shortfall of $10 million going into the budget, but overall, an $18 million budget deficit. Unlike the school board, the city is relied upon a certain fixed set of revenues, and the school board is reliant upon the state of California for much of its resources. The same fundamental problem exists both at the state level and at the city level. Several period years of reckless spending, far in excess of the revenues that it's bringing in. Neither the state or the city budgets' incomes are sufficient to fund these things. And I would like to call upon and have the city unions share the same generosity and sacrifice that the teachers' unions have made, and that is to announce themselves that they would forego pay raises into the future few years in order to, again, to make a statement that we are part of a team, we are part of players, and we will do our part in reducing the demand on the city's revenues that will help, or expenditures that will help offset this terrible deficit that we're facing. I would also, in light of that, recommend that the city council consider giving further relief to the school district by taking one-third of its rate of utility billing off and applying that that to reduce the overall student-teacher ratio. We all know that we get better quality of education when students have a smaller ratio. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Next speaker is Herbert Milano, followed by Patty Scripter. Scripter, pardon me.
Good afternoon, my name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Drayman, Board President Jody Wagner, members of the city council and the board, city staff. I want to commend the city for taking such a significant and proactive, well, not proactive, reactive approach towards the situation that occurred in front of Hoover High School. I have mentioned earlier to some of you that I've had a fairly significant experience with regard to the traffic congestions and the problems that occur, especially with the schools where my children attended, R.D. White, Wilson Middle School, and Glendale High School. All in all, with my three children, I think I spent a good ten years, especially at the high school level, sort of getting a good feel of the problems that have transpired. And as you know, I'm pretty, pretty active in the things that I believe need to be corrected. The problems at Glendale High School have been fairly significant for a fair long time, and I'd actually made attempts with the Traffic and Transportation Office, and I made statements to the Traffic and Transportation Commission concerning the addressing proactively of these issues. So you can imagine my surprise when very little action was taken in the years past, and my suggestion is that we change the way we really approach the meetings of traffic and transportation. Over fifty percent of the meetings were canceled last year. When I addressed that issue to the chair of the Traffic and Transportation, he said that the staff had told him that there were really not many issues that needed to be addressed. And obviously, we have some significant issues that we now have to face, but there will be a continuing effort, in my, in my mind, to include the residents, and the teachers, and the staff of many of the schools to participate actively and proactively in the future at the Traffic and Transportation Commission meetings, so that we don't ignore these problems again. No, it's just not the issue of a traffic accident, as tragic as it is, but it's also the continued, what appears to be a disregard for significant problems in traffic, and not just because of the behavior of many parents, it's because oftentimes, it's an engineering design problem. But we really have not addressed it. There are the traffic issues that take place in Glendale, and in parking issues that take place, and it is my opinion that we must have proper reporting of traffic accidents, be it our youngsters and elderly, traffic congestion, engineering problems that affect us all. And it is my encouragement that this city council select in the future individuals who are truly, who are comfortable with authority, to be able to tell the city staff, we need to address these issues and address it in a very proactive manner. The commissions are not performing to the intended objectives, is, in my opinion. They are way, way too complacent, and I think they need to address proactively all of these issues month to month and have objectives to meet. But those are my suggestions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Milano. Our next speaker is Patty Scripter.
Good afternoon, I'm Patty Scripter, and I'm here as a past Glendale Council PTA president, and I'm also here on behalf of Lynn Miyamoto, who is our current Council PTA president, who is home with a sick child. But we wanted to come, and we wanted to thank you for the great meeting at Hoover. It was very informative for the parents who knew about the meeting and were able to attend. We learned a lot about the steps that the city has taken, and we appreciate the outline of what you are proposing, and we really appreciate the partnership with parents. I heard it several times here today, of making sure that parents are part of the process, and we're very appreciative of that. There have been some impressive steps that are taken, there's a lot of work left to do, and we look forward to collaborating with the city on those steps that need to be taken. And again, we really appreciate the information to parents and the partnership, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much. All right, that is our last speaker card on item four. Let me turn now to colleagues on the dais from both organizations and see where you have comments, input, questions from staff, et cetera. Start over on my right. This is Nahavedia.
First, I will also say how pleased I am to be here with the city council. Thank you for inviting the board to join you at this meeting, so that we can figure out some of these things that we both have a stake in. And in terms of this particular issue, I was at at least one of the meetings that we had at Hoover High School, and for those who knew about the meeting, it was, they came, they had a lot to offer, and Mr. John, Mr. Johnno Bardanyan did a great job of giving this particular presentation to all of us. So let me start by saying that the, we are doing, I think the city and the school is doing what we can that's reasonable to do, to protect our pedestrians and our drivers. It turns out that there was an attentiveness involved in the tragedy, so what can we do as public officials to set policy to, to do as much as we can to reduce the risks? So what, Mr. Bard, what has been presented, I, I like, I like especially the mid-block, changing the existing mid-block pedestrian crosswalk into actually having it be a stoplight. I like what we're doing with the Virginia Avenue. When we were at the meeting at Hoover, Virginia Avenue came up as, as an issue over, it came up a couple of times, because our focus was on Glenwood, but the fact is that there's a lot happening on Virginia as well. So I'm glad to see that we're going to take a step, like the center line, painted center And one of the things that I would want to see is in June of '09, when we look at the long-term plan, I'd love it for us to create a structured way to look at what, how well what we've done has worked. So create a structured way to come back and to say, to have a report back that says these congestion has been lessened, or traffic has been better, or, or safety has improved, maybe based on principal, principals, school principals' evaluation reports, or, or someone out there observing it, so that we can come back and really take a look and see, did the painted center line installed on Virginia Avenue, how much difference did it make? I'd like to come back and know that. And a couple of other things that we're going to do, I'd like to come back in six months or so after the school year and find out what kind of impact it made, rather than wait when something goes wrong and then come back together. I also appreciated the reports, details of what has been done in the past, to, to have it be reviewed, and to have a real detailed picture of what has been done in the past in 2000 or 2001. And I, I think we're on the right track, and I would like to, I also look forward to some of the, what we're going to, the long-term pieces that were discussed, the public education piece, in many languages, both inside of the school and outside of the school.
All right, thank you very much, Board Member Nahavedia. Councilmember Quintero.
I had an opportunity to drive around the school and kind of look at the plan and where everything would fall in, and I do like the different mitigation measures. I think it's going to work, will calm traffic down while school is in session, and also when it's off-session. But I do think that as long as we have this sort of impetus to do it here at this complex, that the school district and traffic and engineering should look at the other schools throughout Glendale, because I drive by Wilson on a regular basis, and that's just a total zoo, is the best way to, the best way to describe it. So I'm sure that there are other junior high, middle schools, and, and other schools in the district that perhaps we can take a look at and just systematically examine to see what else is, is out there that we can kind of help the traffic flow and hopefully calm, calm traffic down surrounding the schools. I am curious whether, after this tragedy, did the PTA or the school district, were, were the parents of the students contacted in the form of a letter, or just something to make them aware of what, there were numerous contacts?
Connects. We have a connected. We actually have a connected phone system by which we contact, in fact, the principals were all here, made numerous phone calls on that day.
Yeah, I think that's important, because obviously, parents who are dropping their kids off are having to think about work, think about their kids, sometimes multi-age children, so it's obvious something that, that the school district or the PTA needs to reinforce. They have to be doubly vigilant during those mornings and afternoons. But I do think this is going to be a big help in that neighborhood. The first plan we did, I think, worked very well, and now we're going to refine it even further, so I think we're on the right track.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Quintero. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, on that note, it might be useful, inasmuch as you all received very much a boiled-down conclusion of a lot of discussion among teachers, principals, administrators, and PTA members, getting to Mr. Quintero's concern about people being informed and included. We had two community meetings, I'll call them. The first meeting was of, I'll call it PTA leadership, excluding staff, I think, in the neighborhood of forty to fifty people. That was the first broad community meeting, and it was the leadership, opinion-makers within the, the parent PTA groups and the teachers, for the neighborhood of three hours of talking about different approaches. And you didn't hear them all here, but any issue, idea, thought somebody had about this area was brought out, discussed, talked about. For example, intuitively, many people were going in the direction of disclosed Glenwood Road. That's kind of an intuitive reaction. When you talk about the implications of that, the safety, frankly, people who stop and think about it eventually arrive at the conclusion, yes, that probably creates more problems than it solves. We had lots of those kinds of ideas. Then there was a second meeting where any interested parent was invited to, again, come, and by my count, we had about, again, about fifty people excluding staff. About a third of the opinion-makers who were at the first meeting came to the second meeting. So we did get a good mix of, of new people there. And again, about two and a half to three hours of discussing anything anybody wanted to talk about, and our, and our rule of thumb there was, you talk about anything, and no sacred cows, anybody had any ideas. Once again, a lot of ideas thrown out, some of which are on the list of items to still be evaluated for the horizon. So we were, we were trying to get into this, very much open to hear what anybody had to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Starbird. Mr. Kukarian.
Thank you, Mr. Drayman, and I appreciate this opportunity to be here last time, outside reaching to you, and I think the most important thing is communication, and we're making, we're addressing the first part of safety, is communicating and working together. And I too want to thank staff for listening, and some of the suggestions we brought up at those meetings. One of the suggestions I brought up was looking at the trash disposal pickup times, and I want to thank Mr. Starbird for looking at that, because when the trash disposal pickups are going at the same time our schools are being dropped off or picked up, it creates another vehicle to create some distractions and maybe some challenges with us. But I agree, and want to agree with my neighboring colleague over here, Mr. Quintero, regarding all of our schools. I think it's imperative, having five children at four different schools, I see some of the challenges from R.D. White to Balboa to La Crisena, Vertical Woodlands, Wilson, the list goes on. Unfortunately, in today's society, most parents, both parents are working, and everyone's in a rush, so it's a major challenge. But the efforts that are being made today, Mr. Drayman, are gratifying as an incoming, I have a parent of an incoming seventh grader at toll next year, one of my children bound to hit toll, I've wanted Hoover, and to see these efforts, it's, it gives me a little sanity, a little feeling safe. I do have some suggestions for us to look at, and for us to do. And one is, I talked to a few of my colleagues at neighboring school districts, and we approached Carol Lou, I heard legislation being brought up earlier today. And one of the legislation I'd like us to do is, when you drive on a freeway and you see construction zones, and a lot of those construction zones, the signs say, if you do a moving violation of construction zone, it's double fines, or triple fines. I think it'd be prudent for us to look at school zones during school hours and propose to legislation in state to adopt a law, moving violations around school sites while schools are open is a double or triple penalty. And then money could be incorporated to education of safety, it could be incorporated for crossing guards, there's a lot of things we can do with that. I think that's a very strong move that we could take, because if someone knows they're going to get a triple or quadruple bill, it may prohibit that with signage, and the same thing of the signs about video surveillance is important. I had the opportunity last week when the five colleagues were in San Diego, and it's important here to talk, because someone brought up about funding. I had a chance to go to Safe School Roots, Mr. Drayman and my colleagues, and I got copies for everyone to have a copy, and I could pass them down. And this piece here is, it's a great project, talks about safe school routes where there's grants, and there's money for us to take advantage of as school districts, and there's an extra one for Mr. Starbird, I don't know if I have enough over there, one more left. And in here, it's incorporated many programs, I know Valley View, I know Ms. Scripter and I talked about, I think Valley View has a program of a national walk day, where the whole school walks to school. And there's a lot of programs and grants available, there's actually a toolkit that's available that we can incorporate, and what it does is, it brings the community out to where we can meet each other's neighbors, it looks at crosswalks, it looks at the whole safety thing, and it looks, looks more of a global picture of our whole district. And this could be incorporated with our initiative of education, creating a safety month. If we create a safety month, oh, am I in the mic? Or one more? If we create a safety month, and we could partner with Glendale Healthy Kids, or local business, or YMCA's, or other organizations, to develop a safety month, as we do the dental hygiene program of educating kids about dental hygiene, we need to start in the elementary school, and I think it's a great way of us doing it. And I found out, there's actually a grant, Mr. Drayman, for crossing guards, more crossing guards, that the state and national and federal government will give if we apply to it. And it's something for us to look at, and we could do that. I know our time's very limited, and I know we do, you have continued the joint meetings with Ms. Wagner and Mrs. Boger, and there's ways that we could relay information more to city council members and to city staff, because I do know we have a very short meeting, but I think it's important that we do continue dialogue. It may not be up here, but at least if we could continue dialogue in different opportunities to where we could suggest some ideas that may be prudent for our families to save and help our community, specifically, safety. Seeing that family, and seeing what happened to Christine, up in La Crisena, we had that Christine Saul there, I think was the family. These challenges happen all the time in our crosswalks, so it isn't just the Hoover area, it's through La Crisena and Montrose too. And it's a serious thing, but I do thank the city staff for making those efforts and working on that. But again, I think it's a two-way street. We, as parents, and as board members, and as council members, go by these school sites in the morning, from Balboa to Glen Oaks, you'll see the parents and how the drop-offs are, and it's, it is a, a serious thing, it's a very busy thing. Sorry, one more final thing, we're trying to communicate and get her. Let's share our channels, channel six and fifteen, so how we could educate our communities on this. Thank you, Mr. Drayman. Sorry for our time, I had a few more things, but I want to pass on another time.
That's, that's all right, there will be other opportunities.
I'm sure there will be.
And I thank you, Mr. Kukarian, Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to thank my colleagues at the school district for coming in here and having this meeting. We do it once a year, maybe we should do it for more, but nevertheless, every time we get together, we talk about very pertinent issues, especially issues that concerns the community. Getting back to Johnno, I would like to ask him a couple of questions on, on the median. I have the same concern as Mr. Weaver had on the issue of the median missing on that section. I am assuming part of it, because I need to know how wide is that section, because it looks like there's a driveway to, to the high school, but is there also a private driveway to the residential?
No, this essentially is serving the school only.
What is that?
He means just north of the.
Okay, keep going, the other way.
That's the school.
Go north.
Keep going.
To the left, to the left.
Yeah, we have a driveway also that serves the residential in that area.
Okay, so that's why it's so wide?
We, yes, we didn't want to restrict their movement into their driveway.
I understand that and appreciate that, but the, the two driveways are pretty wide. Is there anything that we could do, something in between, because I have a feeling somebody is going to use that to make a U-turn, and I don't care how many signs you put in there. I've seen some of these parents who drop their kids off, sometimes they are late, and they try to get out, and they make a U-turn and do. I live on Glen Oaks, and I see them when they. I live on Glen Oaks and I see them when they drop their kids off at Glendale Elementary. So is, is there a way to do something with that or some type of a barrier that is temporary that can be lifted later?
Well, certainly, based on the concern where you see from both councils.
Just think about that, I don't need you to design it today. The other thing was, on the median, we have a tendency to build medians in this city. I know it's only four feet wide, is there any way we could put some type of a, a low ground cover or some kind of a landscaping so it doesn't look like it's just a concrete piece that is four feet wide and has a fence in front of it, it's kind of, you know, kind of looks like a jailhouse place? Is there a way we can at least put some low shrubs or something on the bottom so it does, gives a little bit of greenery, also make that a little bit nicer?
Again, we certainly need to look into that.
Those are my only two comments on this thing, and, and one thing that I would like to deal with, the issue that one of the speakers brought up about the cost, folks, there is cost. The cost of these things, $230,000 for the first list, another $50,000 for the second list. But I ask you this question, what's the cost of a child that is no longer among us? And, and so, in a way, I think the government has to take steps to make sure these type of catastrophes don't happen. I think that is one of our primary jobs. So yes, there's a cost, and we will spend the money to get it done, but the public in general relies on the government to provide the safety net, and I think this is one of those things that we need to do. And I'm sorry, we didn't do it earlier, but nevertheless, I do agree with Mr. Quintero. There are other places, I don't know how we go about this, but somewhere down the line we need to maybe.
Citywide.
Decide how we're going to start and just keep in mind, what is the next most impacted location and deal with this. It may take us several years, but nevertheless, I think we need to start looking at these things and solving them, because most of these schools were built at a time that people walked to school. Now, very few students walk to school. Do you remember that, Mr. Drayman?
I do, that's why I was smiling.
We walk to school.
Never thought it would be referred to as ancient history, but.
I know, it was driven to the front of the door, so that's part of the reason. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yusefian, Ms. Boger.
With your permission, Mr. Drayman, I'll simply hold my comments until we've had all three items, and then I can be a little more brief.
All right, very good. Then I will turn again to Mr. Weaver.
The tragedy happened a few weeks ago up on Hoover area. Was a tragedy. Some people would argue that we're now overreacting by spending $230,000. I mean, I'll, I'll support it, but you have to realize, this will be the fifth time that we've taken additional enhancements there. On Saturday alone, we had a pedestrian hit and killed in a crosswalk, a mother and two children hit in a lighted crosswalk. No matter how much we try to prevent accidents from pedestrians, we can't stop it all. We even have programs, channel six, we make announcements, we advertise, but you and I know that how often we are driving our cars and we see an individual step off the curb with his head or her head down, not even looking to the right or left to see if a car's coming, and proceed out like everybody's going to stop for me because I'm in a crosswalk. We've even had the stories here told to us, crosswalks don't help sometimes, because it gives a false sense of security, so maybe we're better off not having crosswalks in. So we can spend the money here, and I'll support that, but you have to be aware of the fact, no governmental agency in the world can stop every traffic accident from occurring of a pedestrian crossing the street. It's going to occur. In large times, it's the fall of the pedestrian, not being as aware as the driver is supposed to be. I, I wonder sometimes about the schools themselves. I went to Glen Oaks Elementary to Wilson, and I don't know if it works at all, but we, there's talk of staggering the school hours at, up at Hoover, toll, that area, but is it possible, like, an elementary school that goes up through, what, sixth grade, do they still do the sixth? The staggered them fifteen minutes were kindergarten through third or fourth come, and then fifteen minutes later, fourth through sixth. They at least get a little break, because there isn't a school site in the city that I can't go by there if I wanted to at 50 miles an hour on a Sunday morning. Everybody is compressed in that one little timeframe, and while I hope someday that there'll be much more emphasis in this country to stagger work hours for the general workforce, maybe some additional move can be made on separating the hours that kids arrive at school. I know the teachers' union will have a lot to say about certain teachers starting earlier and later than others, but maybe that, that is possible. On the specifics of this case, again, talk about you want to let the people that have that house make a left-hand turn in. What about every one-way street that we have in this city? We're forcing the residents to go around and come in the one-way street. So what is the difference here? Why do we put a median in to give them the break? If you're doing it for public safety, for the fire, for the police, that's one thing, but everybody else, so it's kind of like a one-way street, meaning you can't cross, go around the other way. You want to put landscaping in, okay, now we increase this sprinkler cost, and all the cost of construction, put that in, the maintenance on it, just drives the cost up. You don't have to put K rails there necessarily, you can't put something that's much more direct decorative, or if it is a K rail, let the students go out and paint it, have contests, so it doesn't look just like a white K rail that you see on the freeways. Hope it works. I need to see $50,000 a year additional out of the general fund, which will come out of the reserves for, to have fourteen crossing guards, but I guess if that's what it takes, that's what we're going to have to do, but that doesn't help a single other school site. And one last comment, I'll close on. I wish speakers that got up here and spoke on an item, spoke to the item rather than campaigning for council or giving the city council a lecture on things that don't pertain to this particular matter. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Sambar.
Thank you very much, Mayor Drayman. I'm very proud of you to call this meeting and to bring us back together. It is essential that we continue our spirit and operation in finding solutions to some of the issues and problems that face us. As one who spent 25 years on the sidewalks of Hoover High School, along with my colleague, Kevin Walsh, the principal, who was one of the outstanding members of the staff, the congestion is not new to me. What, what has impressed me today is that we have brought the best thinking of experts in the area of transportation, and we listened to the community input and the opinion-makers, and we had the staff cooperate in finding solutions. I welcome solutions. You are welcome to criticize. You are welcome to question, but I urge you to offer solutions. If this is the best thinking that we could come up with, and I know during my 25 years at Hoover, our staff was serious about children's safety, and I would never question the sincerity or the commitment of our staff to the safety of children, nor that of the families who dropped kids. So I think that the tragedy has caused us to look anew at the problem that we have, and I have a great deal of respect to those who offer sound, logical, reasonable solutions, and to me, the cost is really insignificant, because the loss of one child is far more tragic and far more costly than whatever money we spend to make our communities safe for the children. Can thank you for having us. John, I'm very proud of you. Let's continue this dialogue and this cooperation.
Thank you, Mr. Sambar.
Mr. Major. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam President. John O., I have a few questions, if you wouldn't mind. One of them is, and I presume there was some sort of cost-benefit analysis done as these improvements were being proposed, are there any improvements that were off the table as being just too expensive to implement?
No, not that I can think of. The, the most expensive one was basically the median. The rest of them, there wasn't anything else we could find that we felt that would be necessary to enhance safety. So what you see, what we have come up with, I believe, addresses all the ideas that we found that would be feasible, and it makes sense from a safety standpoint.
Mr. City Manager.
Just a quick supplement to that. In addition to evaluating the possible improvements that the staff and the school administration has had, there were a number of ideas and thoughts that residents brought forward that frankly weren't cast aside because of cost, but because they didn't feel they would be the most effective way to address the problem. As an example, retractable bollards, a technology that could close off the street instantaneously every time a student passes, tremendously expensive, that's not the reason on which frankly we're not pursuing it, a lot of other operational considerations and liability considerations there, but we were open to every idea, first without regard to cost, and then certainly, cost was a factor, but the first concern was over safety and effectiveness.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Major.
I mean, in certain instances, I mean, you, in a sense, you need to treat this Glenwood Road as a, a rail line or a inherent danger, and what we see sometimes is above-grade crossings, we've seen those at Glendale College, they used to have a below-grade crossing. Is that something that even entered the, the evaluation process or just was too, too expensive, or, or its use and its benefits just not up to par?
In a, in a school area like this, given the, again, volume of the college bridge, the pedestrian bridge, it's a, a difference, it's a different setting, you're crossing about almost six lanes in addition to the, the width of the sidewalks, the, it's going from one parking structure to, to the college campus. And here, what we have found in studies that, you know, most of the kids, pedestrians, they're not going to go up about almost one level to, to cross on, you know, go up the steps, cross over the street, and then come down. It also raises issues about ADA requirements, because you really have to have either an elevator or you have to have a ramping where the width of the area of the right-of-way there is not available. We have trees on both sides, so we did not think that would be a, a safety enhancement just in that one location, so because you also, they have the crossings at both locations within about a 500-feet walking distance.
So every reasonable improvement, regardless of cost, has been implemented?
Yes, I believe so.
In your opinion?
Yes, and we're continues to looking, if there's something else from signage or striping or any lighting or technology becomes available, we'll be happy to look into them.
I would like to say, I do applaud the school district's Walk to School Day, which was, when was it, last month, November, perhaps October? I think it gave kids a, a good opportunity to, to get out of their vehicles, their cars, and walk to school, and I think it gave parents an opportunity also to walk to school as well, and as a result, clearly, it reduced some of the congestion at, at all the campuses. We use volunteers occasionally on our police force. Reserve officers are paid a dollar a day or a dollar a year. Is there any opportunity to use reserves as crossing guards throughout to save us the 50,000 or so a year charge for the crossing guards?
Mr. City Manager.
Well, that's an idea that we have, have actually looked at. The difficulty comes in terms of getting people who will be reliable, frankly. We have difficulty now, even with paid crossing guards, making sure we have the appropriate cadre of people to draw and cover sicknesses and people who aren't available. It's, it's a bit of a thankless job, because you want somebody who will work two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon in all kinds of weather, inclement and cold, and so we utilize a contractor who helps maintain a cadre of people that you can depend on. Volunteers sound like a good idea, but in practicality, to depend on them, just one that work concerned wouldn't work as reliably as you'd like. Another, another issue that came up in meeting with the residents, there is, there is a tendency to think that every intersection that your child crosses needs a crossing guard. If that, if we did that, I mean, literally from doorway to school, we would have hundreds of crossing guards and imagine managing that process. I think it was in the Hoover Auditorium meeting with general parents, where there became sort of a shared acknowledgement that you can't protect every child from doorway to school. There has to be some level of responsibility shared by parents in particular, but also through education with students to be aware, because to think that, that we can protect a child 100% from their doorway to the school and have an army of crossing guards or police officers or special lighting at every crosswalk, it just isn't going to be manageable nor practical. And I think that was a real benefit that came out of the last community meeting, was sort of a shared acknowledgement, and, and many parents made that comment, that parents need to be more responsible as well. So to say that we have, we have literally thought, tried to think of everything regardless of cost, at some point, practicality and cost does have to weigh into the picture.
My last comment regarding cost is, are we going to figure out a way to fit this into our budget as a mid-year cycle or beginning of the school year?
Yes, if Mr. Bagdania is going to make the improvements, we're going to have to find it now. So yes, we will make room for it within our existing CIP. Obviously, the crossing guards, once they're added, will have a little bit of time to work into, will only incur half the cost for this fiscal year, full annualized cost next fiscal year. We've taken this like many of the highest priorities, we'll just have to find room for it, and frankly, something else will go without being done.
All right, thank you, Mr. Major. President Wacker.
I just had a couple of, one comment and one question, really. The comment is, I believe, on the, with respect to the median, there's also a driveway on the Keppel side, I think, into the parking lot, is that correct? We have our three principals out here, Mr. Welsh, Mary Mason, and Dr. Paula Nelson. So the same, the same concerns would apply, although the, the same remedy that Mr. Weaver mentioned, it's possible to go around the block, and I leave that to you. I, I did wonder about the parking meters, and I'm, although we have this information, I sort of missed that piece before. I'm not aware, is there, would the meters be in, on the Keppel toll side just during the time, the non-drop-off hours, or is there parking, is there parking at those schools now? And I don't know if you know the answer or if our principals.
I, I have the answer.
You have a short answer for us.
Sure. Basically, it's, right now, it's one-hour parking at the locations that we're going to put the meters, so we're not changing that.
I thank you, and I know we have two other agenda items we hope to get to, so whatever you need to do next. Drayman?
All right, thank you very much. All right, I'm going to hold my comments till the end as well, agenda items, I have no other speaker cards. There is an agenda item here at 4A, which is a motion directing staff. As a matter of fact, it took a little longer to get around the dais than it normally does for us, so Mr. Kusakian, if you, just twice the number twice, if you wouldn't mind reading the motion one last time.
The motion is directing staff to implement necessary environmental review and short-range traffic safety enhancements in the vicinity of Hoover Keppel toll schools.
Move the item, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
A motion and a second?
And that includes any environmental review, sequel reports.
Right. It's indicated in the motion.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Moving yet with some things already, but yet, there might be some sequel reports.
Any other discussion? Please, thank you, Mr. Kusakian.
Councilmembers, Major. Yes. Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes.
All right, let us move on to item five, please.
Item five is director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding replacement of the Adult Recreation Center tennis courts.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chapchan.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Raymond.
Parks.
Parks and Recreation, that's right.
Bring your tennis dogs, however.
Oh, not today. We don't know what's on underneath the suit.
That's right, you might be wearing them underneath. Let's talk about tennis courts.
Thank you, Mayor Raymond. Commissioner, President Wagner, school board members, city council members. We are going to be presenting two options to this body for the replacement of four tennis courts at the Adult Recreation Center. This is part of the mitigation measures for the new Adult Recreation Center. We will be losing four courts there as that measure, in the mitigation measures, it spelled out the replacement of two courts at Fremont. Last February, we had talked to staff about possibly utilizing the courts at Glendale High School, and I think we've got PowerPoints there. There are two options, two Glendale tennis court replacement. What we would be looking at is the current tennis courts that are on the west side of the campus. We would, the scope of the work would be resurfacing, new lights, new nets, new fencing. There would be an ADA component. We would have to provide for ADA parking and accessibility. We would also need a restroom on the site. We had originally talked to GUSD. We had come to some form of agreement on terms, in terms of the use of the facility. The school would use it, the GUSD would use it until 6:00 PM. The community would have access to it from 6:00 to 10:00 and on weekends. Of course, the school also had several, I think, 12 days out of the year that they wanted to reserve it for special events. So we had an understanding, and then the total budget at that time was $847,000. We had a funding gap of $175,000, so just kind of left that alone at that point. We were told to move on, and we moved on to the Fremont Park site. Can you go to the Fremont Park site? And this is currently the Fremont Park site. We have eight tennis courts at Fremont Park. What we would do is locate two tennis courts, if this was the option, on the east side, right where the current basketball courts are, and then we would relocate the basketball courts further south. Both options are about $900,000. At this point, we have $700,000 in our budget. There's an additional $50,000 in gap funding from the original $175,000, only because we think there may be some environmental work that we may need to do, and we wanted to factor that into the overall budget. At this point, we're really looking for direction. Our recommendation, the staff recommendation, would be to move forward with GHS. I think in terms of the use of the facility, both for the high school students and the community, I think everybody benefits from it. Two tennis courts over at Fremont High School would give us about 10,000 hours of use. Four tennis, six tennis courts over at Glendale High School would give us about 15,000, give the community about 15,000 hours of use. So there's a little bit more use for the community as well. So I think the benefits to both kind of outweigh the Fremont site. So our recommendation would be Glendale High School to move forward with that. And I could take any questions if you'd like at this point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chapchan. I'm going to ask my colleagues if they will hold their comments and questions till after we, we have one speaker card on this topic, and then we'll come back. All right, our speaker is Harvey Pearson. Here he comes.
I'm a fellow, the city council and Mr. Mayor. I'm the one that had a letter in last Thursday in the Glendale news press and the photograph of the kids playing tennis there, so. It's nothing personal what I wrote, if any of you happen to read it, sorry. But some facts that I checked into, the staff report, reports there are 37 public tennis courts in Glendale. If you check it out, 32 of them are in North Glendale. That means South Glendale currently has only five, and four of the five are the very adult recreation center ones that if demolished, will leave South Glendale with exactly one public tennis court, which is the one at Maple Park. I've been there, and it's used for skateboarding more than tennis playing. What I would say is about the Adult Recreation Center is there really are three adjacent areas in the same property. The adult, or better, the senior recreation center, the undeveloped Central Park, and the mainly children and youth tennis courts. So what demolishing the four tennis courts there would really do is make the entire property exclusive of the would-be Central Park area, a 100% senior recreation center, booting the kids and youth out altogether. And when I visited Fremont Park this very morning, armed with a simulated after photograph, I don't know if that was up there or not, it looked very much like the trees. The staff report refers to being lost when include at least one of the two most iconic palm trees left in the park. And I say left because someone circa the late '70s or early '80s told me that several of those beautiful palm trees were removed for a now dirt soccer field, it appears. And one of the two picnic tables, that would also appear to be in the removal block, was occupied by eight men playing backgammon or whatever game it is they play in many of Glendale's parks. That and the other table would be lost. But also appear that the would-be new basketball court, which is currently in a perfect spot right where it is now, would also mean the removal of perhaps a couple of thousand square feet of precious lawn. I mean, we need lawn to stroll on, like for a quiet walk in the park. And on a weekend, per what I was told by a worker there, there could be solid activity that is tennis, soccer, basketball, all the way along Kennelworth Avenue, making it difficult for Kennelworth Avenue car parkers to reach the peace and quiet areas of the park like they can easily do now. The proposed high school solution has one problematic thing of 6:00 to 10:00 PM on weekdays would, I would surmise, not be exclusive with a high school student body. And so therefore, there would be more competition for court space, including perhaps families from nearby Eagle Rock. I know there are people that testified here. Is that five minutes already?
It's not, it's three, which was the time allotted.
Well, there are people from Eagle Rock who testified for the senior recreation center. Furthermore, the hours for the quite young elementary school...
Your time is up, so I will ask you to...
It's all in, summarize or go back. Be gone. It's all in there anyway. The kids play at sunset at 6:00 PM, they go home. Take them out of the high school.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pearson. That is our only speaker on this subject. Let me go to my colleagues from both the school board and the city council. I urge you to keep your comments as brief as we can, and I will start on my left this time.
On terms of bang for your buck, I think we do get greater leverage of our dollars, so I am in support of that. With the, I guess we're giving direction to staff to explore the feasibility, the legal and technicalities involved. I would like to keep as much use to the public as possible outside of the school hours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Magar. Let me just reiterate, us people looking in, this is not leading up to a vote on this item today. This is purely for direction, for exploring the feasibility. Mr. Semenow.
Speaking personally, I appreciate to have the facility upgraded for the use of the community as well as the use by the students at the school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, the school, we have more tennis courts, but financially, come back and see us in a couple of years. Want to put this in the mix of the $8 million cut we're going to start making in January, pass the secret documents, probably at least two or three years out on this, but even continue looking at concepts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Bogar, are you going to wait until...
Mr. Starbert.
Yes, Mr. Starbert.
Sure, Raymond. On that note of costs, I will point out that as projects go, this one, this replacement of the ARC tennis courts carries a rather high priority because it is a mitigation measure as part of the environmental review of the Adult Recreation Center. So although it could take a while either for Fremont or the high school, and staff's strong recommendation is that we get the biggest bang for our invested dollar at the high school, this is a project that will have to be very high on the capital improvement list because it is a mitigation measure for the ARC.
And my understanding is, by the time we open up the ARC, we need to have the tennis courts in place, so as part of the mitigation measure.
Mr. Eusefian.
I agree with Mr. Starbert. I think it is a mitigation measure. But my issue is, I need to find out, because we have talked about this before, and we were on again, then it was off again, so I just want to know if it's on again or not, because if it is, we should move forward. If it's not, we should move forward with Fremont. Either one of them is fine with me. I just need to know which direction we're going to go, because we need to get on.
Mr. Starbert.
Yes, well, that's the purpose of this meeting. And because this project at either location would still require environmental review, that doesn't mean it's going to take an EIR. It might actually be exempt or mitigated neglect, but we do have to do the checklist. That's why we're not asking you for a vote, but we are trying to get a consensus from both the city council and the board if this is a project you want us to proceed down the road on.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. This will be brief, too. I look at our whole district, all of our schools, Hoover High School, CV High School, and Glendale High School. If you look at our tennis courts, every weekend, they're being used by the community anyways. And I think there's a win-win situation for us, all of our school sites, when unfortunately, when you looked at closing, taking the basketball courts down at Brand Park because of gang activity, the kids that actually used that facility actually started going to our elementary schools and jumping the fence and playing it on weekends. So when we make a decision here, it's two elected bodies, when we make one move, it affects another part of the neighborhood. And a lot of decisions that you've been making, or the council's been making, affects the schools in many ways. So I'm open to something like this that can help facilitate our facilities at Glendale High. I think it's a win-win situation for us. But I'd like to, again, look at all of our schools, because Hoover High needs it, and I know Kevin Walsh is here in the audience, but all of our schools. If you look at them, you drive by, I think it's School Street, on any weekend, and you'll see all types of neighborhood people using those tennis courts. They'll crack the fence, and they'll get in there, and they'll play. And I know money's tight, but if we could share this expense together with capital improvement, as a board member, I'd be supportive of it. Thank you, Mr. Raymond.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian. I was one of those people when I was still thin enough to squeeze between the...
The fences.
Yeah, yeah.
Now you climb.
Yeah, that's it, all right.
Play pickup passes.
Or get a hole in it.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, Glendale High School's my first choice, and one of the main reasons is that it's by far the most concentrated area, the city of Glendale. There's more density in those surrounding neighborhoods than anywhere else. So Fremont Park has existing tennis courts, but to be able to use Glendale High School, I think, is a plus for the community, and it actually is easily to reach from Chevy Chase or anywhere else. So I think that's the best location for the courts.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Nahabedian.
That is a project, the Glendale High School one is a project I would like to, for us to continue to pursue, and I would support. I have a question. After 6:00 PM, Glendale High School, what is the current use in terms of young people, and would they be displaced in some way if we had the adults there after 6:00 PM?
Well, I don't believe those tennis courts have lights on them anyway, so for the most part, they're not being used.
It's the sneaking in use if it was happening, okay. Okay. And on the weekends, during the day, on the weekends, Saturday, Sunday?
They're being used primarily by community use, not students.
Okay.
And if I may add, if we have someone there, at that point, they take better care of the courts as well, so you get longer life out of it.
Yeah. It sounds great, and I would like for us to work together and make it happen.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wagner.
Well, as the mother of a tennis player at Glendale High, sorry we didn't get this sooner, but I think this would be a great use. We have gone to Fremont Park for tennis lessons with the city, and, you know, I know students are public, too, so although the school use, the programmatic use would cease at 6:00, I don't suppose that would exclude high school students, once they're done with their homework, from possibly using those courts as a member of the public or in public tennis lessons. But anyway, I look forward to it, and thank you for bringing us here.
All right, and I'll just say on the topic, I will, away to the end, I just wanted to add, these are also, I'm not particularly thrilled with the fact that we're going to close the tennis courts at Central Park, to be very honest with you, and I've said this before. However, we are where we are. I didn't get to vote on that. It came up after, prior to my joining the city council. May not have mattered anyway when you look at the history of how this evolved, but given that and given the constraints related to the mitigation with the change and the creation of the expansion of the ARC and so on, I'm going to support this. It also, there's another reason we support it, and that's because it's also, in addition to being in an area, as Mr. Quintero said, that is so highly populated, it also is closer in proximity to the existing courts that we are going to remove. And I just don't think those folks are going to make the trek over to Fremont, whereas I think they may at Glendale High. I've played on all of the courts in the city. That was my sport, going through junior high, high school, and then eventually college. And so I know these courts very well. Also, the comment about what is North Glendale and South Glendale, the distribution of courts, yes, you're right, there are more in North Glendale, but also, some of the ones that you're calling North Glendale are North Glendale by a block or two blocks or, you know, less than a quarter of a mile, like Fremont, like, you know, even some of the high school courts. So anyhow.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would looking at Glendale High, which I guess we're on agreement now with, include access to the parking lot? So if people drive, they have a place on there. Will that be a part of it? Good.
All right. At this point, considering it's not a vote, I am just going to go down the line and ask for a nod of a head or a consensus from the council in terms of direction.
Sounds like we have it. I think, Mr. Mayor, based on the comments, we...
You can count, is what you're saying?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, you better, because the school's here.
Any city manager can count to three, so.
With five of us, that becomes the practice, doesn't it? All right, then we'll forego that and jump to the, unless there is any other comments on my call, we'll move on to item number five.
I think you can hear our consensus on this as well, so.
All right, very good. Mr. Kasaki, if you would. Yes, Mr. Eusefian.
I would like to let you know, I had a prior engagement that I have to leave within the next 15 minutes. So I'll be here for...
By strange coincidence, Mr. Semenow, so do we all.
Okay, well, no, but I have a memory.
And I thank you for letting me know that ahead of time. Mr. Kasaki, if you would.
Number six is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding proposed glum elementary school soccer field project.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me state that those assembled, we have one speaker card on this matter, let's hear that, if you don't mind, and then we'll... Our speaker is Herbert Milano.
Good afternoon, again, Mayor Raymond, for press, Julian Wagner, members of the school board and members of the city council, city staff, and school staff. In the past few years, we have had some significant successes. I consider the joint projects that the school district and the Glendale City Council has promoted, you know, the Pacific Park, the Ceritos Park. And it is my hope that you move forward in similar joint enterprises with regard to fields and participation, because it's very much needed in southern Glendale. Now, I can understand that there might be a reluctance oftentimes from the school board in continually providing the access to areas to provide the general public with parkland necessary. And I can understand that, because for many years, many of the opportunities that we had to create parkland in the southern part of Glendale, south of the 134, where 95,000 people live, has been shortchanged. We lost the park that was going to come up here where the Whole Foods is. We lost the parkland that was going to be where this, you know, where across the street where we have this particular commercial center. We lost the additional parkland that we could have had in Central Park. We lost the parkland that we could have had at Centennial Park. You know, we lost acres and acres of parkland to commercial enterprises. And in the meantime, we've been asking the school district to accommodate us. And so in light of the fact that this is all under the bridge and we still have the shortage, I want to appeal for a continuation of that ethos, because in an area such as the one where we are now sitting, which is recreational planning area 10, we have the most significant shortage of parkland. We have .013 acres per 1,000 people. And in many areas of Glendale, we have over six acres of parkland. And in many areas of Glendale, we have over six acres of parkland. The area, area, uh, recreational planning area ten, which is bordered by Broadway to the freeway from Brand to Chevy Chase roughly, has about thirty-two thousand people in about less than half an acre altogether. There are no place for these kids to play and I'm suggesting that you consider, in addition to this other project, future projects like with R.D. White, opening R.D. White to provide facilities that are in dire need. In my opinion, the fault comes from a council that presents a budget like this where tens of millions of dollars in salary increases to the employees, to the final capital that says this is what we did, to the quality of life measures that come out once every eight years that really tell us how we're doing socially. And it is only when we begin to look at how these documents, the quality of life documents and the lack of attention that is given, that it tells us very clearly that we're not truly paying attention to the final outcome of the quality of life measures. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boger, I'm going to turn to you first because you haven't had a chance to say a word yet, so.
Were we going to make a presentation on Columbus and then move through real quickly?
We are going to make a presentation. Did you want to wait till after that? I thought I'd check... All right, is there any other council or, or board member that would like to have a comment first or a question? All right, then let's go to the report.
Thank you very much. Mayor Drayman, President Wagner, Board and Council, we'd like to move through this obviously quite quickly and, first of all, thank you once again for sharing this time with us. It's been tremendously productive already. Since the passage of Measure K in nineteen ninety-seven, the district has, has invested over three hundred million dollars in community funds through the bond as well as state construction bonds. It's interesting that as we look at Columbus Elementary School, we look at the two schools most closely adjacent to that, Edison and Ceritos School, and we find both, in both of those schools, we have elements of joint projects. So we have a tradition in South Glendale of really looking at these kinds of projects. What we're going to do with you is share with you the phase one of this project and we're incredibly proud of this because this building that's being provided for the students in, in the Columbus attendance area really is a building that's of equal quality as the buildings at Edison and Ceritos and we're very proud of those buildings as well. So we'll move you through phase one real quickly and talk about these buildings that are being completed and actually be opened next month. So we're, we're pleased with that. And talk briefly about phase two and then allow your staff to move on with phase three and the construction of the, the soccer field. So with that, I'd like to give you John Fenton, who is our Director of Facilities and Construction.
Good afternoon. We started this program off with the site of putting together a joint project where we could expand the playground area. We decided on a two-story building. If we can get first slide, please. As you see the site before we began, we had a number of classroom buildings that exist now off to the west side of the campus, a group off on the south and east side with the playground in the, in the northeast side of the campus, and a number of extra classrooms that are modulars, some of them old wooden bungalows. The concept was to use the area to the east, northeast, to construct two-story classroom buildings, again, to increase the size of the playground and exercise area. Concept came about, concepts were drawn up, city and district board got together, said how about a soccer field? Let's put some grass over in that area. And so this is what we started off in concept and we're going to come back to this one. But in, in the next slide, what you'll see is what we started with on that northeast side of the campus. We went through planning, chose contractors, went to bid, and in March, in fact, March fifteenth, we started with temporary fencing and began the work of excavation and getting ready for the foundations and slabs for the two classroom buildings. Through April and May, that continued with all the underground work to the point where in June, first week in June, we began to set precast concrete panels on those slabs. That continued for about nine weeks, all day, every day. To the point where we came at the end of July, we had all of the structural steel, all of the tilt-up portions of the building up, and we began to do interior finishes, interior utilities, starting on the site work itself. And as we've continued that through the last four and a half months, we're at a point now where we've got the landscaping in and we've got these beautiful new classrooms. These are updated classrooms with the ability for teacher amplification, new lighting, and just wonderful space with nice open windows. And here's a shot, most recent shot, looking on to, I believe that's Mount Tom, to the north of, and this is the eighteen classroom building. And I think it really, really, really fits in well with the area and the concept that we began at the beginning of this project. The next portion is to do the modernization of the buildings that are on campus now. We're going to place administration into the L-shaped building that's on the corner of Milford and Columbus. And then these finger buildings, which are on the west side of the campus, the old classrooms, will be demolished. That timeline begins in January and, and between June twentieth, the end of school, and August, the end of August, we'll be raising those buildings and beginning the rough graded field, which is eventually where increment three will begin, where we have the city coming in and doing the joint project with the soccer field. So you end up with this beautiful campus here. And I believe it's going to really enhance the use throughout this area and really be a plus for both of us and all the kids who'll attend and who'll be able to participate in the programs. If you have any questions.
Let's see if we do. Mr. Weaver.
Two modular buildings to the north, the two modular buildings to the north of the soccer field. Why are you keeping those?
There's special programs. There's what we term the early and extended educational learning program. Those are seven hundred and twenty square foot CSR classrooms and they're going to work out well for that end of the property because we, they have a lot of walk-in, walk, walk-out through-the-day activity where parents drop their kids off and they can move in and out through that area.
It's very essential to the school district.
They're part of the programming, yes.
Okay, because it looked like enough room for a couple tennis courts. The one, the one other question, is that a full-size soccer court that you're, that's on the concept drawing here?
Well, I believe it's a...
Fifty-five by one hundred yards, so it's...
Because from what I recall, you could put three of the smaller courts on there. You could get dual use out of it. When you look at the age groups that use soccer fields, you could put three on the size of one full. So if it was lined so you could use it for adult and intermediate youth, you'd get a lot more use out of it.
We could, but what we've heard from the community, AYSO and some of the others, is we have smaller fields, we're lacking in the bigger fields.
So they don't now and won't need in the future to give...
They, they need a regulation-sized field, they need more regulation-sized.
Remarkable, then. I'll never hope to hear, well, I'll never expect to hear them down here asking for smaller fields.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't count on that.
Ah-ha! I knew it.
Okay. Questions? Okay, thank you. Let's, thank you very much for the presentation.
They are remarkable.
Sorry. Remarkable images. Mr. Chapchan?
If I may, Mayor Drayman and school board members and council members, there is, there are a couple of challenges here, just so that you all know what we may be facing and we have a timeline for this, but this will...
Do you have any truth, this is not easy?
Well, no, this, yeah, this is not going to be easy. This, this is going to probably require some environmental work because if Peter can, the site is a great site for a soccer field, but it is surrounded by residential. And it's...
On one side.
All, all the entire site is surrounded by residential. So we were looking at potential lighting for the field and if that happens, there's noise issues, so you will hear from residents on that environmental issue. So it won't be easy at this point. Here's the site, Peter, if you can go to the next slide. As you can see, to the south of it on Milford, those are all residential units. On Columbus, you have residential units. Just immediate to the west of that is an apartment building that will, you know, the lights will affect them. There's the Days Inn and other residential units there. So it will be a challenge in terms of light, traffic, and noise, really, the kicking of soccer balls, whistles, that type of thing. So this, this is going to be a challenge in terms of putting lights on these fields. Just wanted to bring that up.
Anything more you'd like to tell us?
Um, no, that's just, that's it.
You were just here, you're the guy here with this bringing the problems and the lights and the whistles, is that it?
It's not problems, it's just those are challenges, how's that?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chapchan. Mr. City Manager.
The timing of this, right, we originally thought we were going to get access to the fields in, I think, January two thousand and ten and we planned on doing the work between June and August of, of two thousand and ten. We're going to try to move that timeline up as much as possible. As you can see, the EIR and design work will take about twelve months and, and we hope to be finished by August two thousand and ten for these fields, assuming things go right with the EIR.
We had contemplated a two-year timeframe for the district to complete its construction. They are way ahead of schedule. The, the school construction has gone much, much faster than anybody anticipated.
And under budget.
And under budget.
Those are, those are two good phrases, actually.
Oh, but that every project would end up that way.
All right. Mr. Sambar.
Has, looking into the future, has there been any consideration to the possibility of the use of eminent domain on a portion of the land that is adjacent to the property in question?
So is that a question for the city or the school district?
Depends whose billions he's talking about on the eminent domain. And I do notice the, the council, you were... I know, make everyone in the council quiet.
I know, this topic has been discussed previously, but it certainly is of interest. The other question is with respect to the two buildings that have to remain on the property, the suggestion was made that perhaps the roof could be converted into tennis courts.
No, 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 I didn't say that. You have to structurally design buildings to take the load of the tennis courts.
And Mr. City Manager, did you have a...
Ms. Mayor, very quickly, as it relates to the use of eminent domain, we're behind the school district all the way. We did a number of years ago, do an assessment of the acquisition of the two large multifamily residential properties to the west, really with respect to the possibility of replacing it with both sports facilities and affordable housing. Relocation alone, and keep in mind, this has been probably in the five to six years ago range, relocation alone could get into the, the ten million dollars and above. That would be just relocation, not even including land acquisition. So at that time, we, we said to ourselves, there's, from a cost standpoint, it's just not practical.
So you're, you're saying that you will fight this issue to the last board of education members?
Again, we will support the district morally as much as they need.
Okay, all right. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you, Mr. Drayman. Just want to echo on one of the comments made earlier about looking at other school sites. I know Frank, we talked about Franklin one, one time before and Marshall and R.D. White, there's some great opportunities if we could do this. Visiting San Diego again, other cities, you see little mini soccer fields throughout the town, actually right in downtown itself, as you were in a very urban area and we have a lot of challenges. The question I have, and I know Ms. Boger and my colleagues have had, supported this before, since we are doing it to school site, I know the parks recs can be controlling after hours, it's our hope that this would be beneficial to our youth of our community of La Crescent at Glendale Montrose, that it wouldn't be used for adult programs outside the city. I would, that's what our hope is about sharing the land and the project with you guys because of, from AYSO, Home Minute Men, there's so many youth soccer programs and we all know that the soccer field's what happens. If we just regulate it to our community mainly, and whatever's left over, we'll charge them triple. We'll charge them, but that's just a one quick comment about the fees and...
And if I may, I mean, we've actually reduced the, the number of adult leagues and adult games at our sports facilities. And we understand that they use our, our baseball fields, you know, for practice, so everything's being torn up. We, we know the need is for youth soccer.
Okay.
All right, other comments?
Thank you.
Absolutely, Mr. Kokorian. Other comments or questions? Mr. Quintero.
No question, just comments. I'm very happy that we're moving forward with this and I'm glad the project has come in quickly. There's no question, every last school, middle school, elementary school, especially in the southern portions of the city, we should be following this route. Have the kids use it during the day and in the evening and afternoons and weekends, it turns to community space. In South Glendale, as we know, there is actually no place to find this much land for a soccer field or a baseball diamond or whatever it is. So this is a great project and I hope we can bring it to fruition quickly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weaver.
I'll destroy and what I, there's no mitigation measure tied to this one, is there? We're talking four hundred thousand, it can join the rest of the crowd in the eight million dollar cut in January. If it finishes high priority, we go. But if it doesn't, then it waits.
Ms. Nahaberyan.
I'd like to see us go forward. I think that we can figure out between the city and GUST together through meetings, the agreements on the terms and the use and maintenance and the environmental impact is, looks like is going to be the most difficult thing from what I heard and also from what I read. I want to be good neighbors to, as a school and as a school facility, I want to be good neighbors to those around us, so I want to, I want us to be really attentive to that and see how we can get the most use out of the field, but be able to be attentive to what's happening around the neighborhood. So I'll leave that to, I guess we'll wait and see how that's going to work out.
Okay, very good. Mr. Najarian and then turn to my colleague, Ms. Boger, to back cleanup.
I'm definitely in favor of this. We've allocated the money in our future year CIP funds, but please, let's do an extra careful job of reaching out to the neighbors. We all know what happens when neighbors are surprised with athletic facilities against the schools. We definitely, none of us want that to occur at this location. The disgruntled neighbors, how dare you play soccer on the soccer field type of thing. So the sooner we get to them and, you know, explain the different types of uses, the different hours of use, I think the better we can start to bring them over to our side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Ms. Bog.
Thank you, Mr. Drayman. First of all, I would like to, I will, as you said, back cleanup. I want to thank all of the parents and the community members, our staff, our principals, our parents especially, and Mr. Bagdanian for the really exemplary job that you and your staff have done with listening and bringing together those ideas and providing us with a new approach to traffic calming at the total Capitol Hoover area. It's a real joy to have that kind of cooperation between the school district and the city. So I want to thank you very much for that. I would like to join Mr. Kokorian and ask this body to help us support legislation that would give each of us a better approach and more tools to work with the kinds of things that we all see occurring in the areas of our schools as far as traffic violations are concerned. Mrs. Wagner and I, Mr. Kokorian and I, in the past are members of the Five Star Coalition and the California Association, Association of Large Suburban School Districts. I'm sure you are also members of those kinds of organizations and I hope that you would ask those organizations to join us when we approach our legislators throughout the state with the doubling of fines and another issue that I heard raised, the police officers being able to use video cameras to sit in one place in the morning and video what goes on and write the tickets afterwards. And I think that would be a brilliant idea. I want to thank Mr. Yusefian for being the first to mention that, yes, it's costly to do these traffic calming measures, but they are for the benefit of the safety of the students of our community and certainly no one can put a price on a child's life. As the former mother, as the mother of a former tennis player at Glendale High School, also of the opposite sex, I'm very... also of the opposite sex, I'm very happy to see the approach to our tennis courts. I do believe that this will benefit both the school and the city. And I don't know about the rest of you, but one of the questions I was routinely asked when I saw this office was whether or not I would work with the city to make our school playgrounds and fields and open spaces available to address the very real needs for parks and recreation space in the city of Glendale. We are doing so on a very informal basis, as has already been mentioned, people climbing fences and squeezing through gates, and Mr. Weaver suggested, and I'm sure it won't be far before, we're tunneling under the fences to get in. So, the more work that we can do together, the more of these fields that we can simply produce as joint-use places, I think the more we will serve all of our joint constituents. Last, but most certainly not least, I want to offer a very personal thank you to you, Mr. Drayman. It has been a real joy in this last few months since you took office to once again have these routine meetings that have existed in the past between the President of the School Board, the Mayor of the City, Mr. Starbird, Dr. Escalante, and as Vice President of the Board, it's been my privilege to attend also. That is the kind of leadership that you, as the Mayor of the City, can provide and have provided, and I am deeply appreciative that we have someone in this office who understands the necessity of our working together, because it benefits our entire community. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I thank you as a product of the Glendale Schools. Ms. Wagner, I should say, President Wagner.
Well, I've said my piece on each of the items, and I look forward to our continuing, our moving forward on, in all of these areas. I appreciate being here. I know you have another part of your meeting coming up, and we'll head down the street and continue with the rest of our meeting, but--
For--
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. For my part, I would just add, with regard to these items, one of the things I have heard consistently from the, and I'm, this, I guess I'm directing this to City Manager Starbird and Dr. Escalante, Superintendent Escalante. The thing I keep hearing from all of my colleagues up here is the desire and the need, the belief that there is a need, frankly, a call for opening up the facilities all the way around. I know that there are problems and issues related to that that we didn't have time to get into today. I've heard it here on the dais from almost everyone up here. There are liability issues, there's all kinds of issues. My request for a homework project for the upcoming year is that we really take a crack at solving those issues jointly. I think we need to do that. It certainly is going to be an advantage to the children in the city, your students, our constituents who are clamoring for recreational facilities, they exist, your taxpayers or our taxpayers, we're all, we all pay into this, whether it's the schools or the civic facilities. So I would, I would encourage us to move forward down that path as soon as we can and as diligently as we can, so that we're not in the, you keep hearing up here about issues of noise and so on. I don't want us to continue a program of, "Well, the school board owns the whistles, but the city owns the P inside, and so we have to figure out who gets the complaint when there's a problem with noise," and so on. You know, we can split those hairs if need be, but I, I would love to see us move down that path and answer this, what seems to be an overwhelming call to open up the facilities jointly. Don't know how we'll do that, but if we don't sit down and really talk about it, we'll never get there. So let's, let's give it a try. I want to thank my colleagues for coming, I want to thank the public for coming, the staffs from both organizations. Thank you for your diligence, thank you for your thoughtfulness. Again, it's a pleasure to see you. Have a wonderful holiday, vacation, Christmas vacation, and we will, we will see you afterward.
Move to adjourn for the City Council.
We have a motion to adjourn for the City Council. Do we have a second?
Just hug it.
A second? We are adjourned.
And we'll recess to, to our next part.
Okay, thank you.
And Mary, adjourn if we have to, recess if we don't.
I second.